Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us today. Local leaders are here today to talk to you about some recent troubling incidents that have happened throughout Durham over the past few days. Speaking will be Mayor Leonardo Williams, Durham County Commissioner Board Chair Nita Alom, and Durham Public Schools Board Chair Millicent Rogers. And following their comments, we will take questions. So I'll turn it over to Mayor.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor Leonardo Williams. And so today, we wanted to make sure that we are present and that we are aware of some of the recent events in our community, and also to ensure that we are standing together firmly as the city, as the county, as the school board, the trifecta of governing bodies in this, in this community, and not only state that we are aware of the recent events, but also to ensure that we are standing together as we respond to these events. This is a story, this is a, this is a moment for us to make sure that we're letting our community know that we're listening and also ensure that the expectations are properly managed. I know that oftentimes, you know, it's, well, what is the leader going to say to solve the issue? And hopefully, we can provide proper context to that today. But this is a joint effort amongst the city, the county, and the school board because it affects us all. And not only will we just sort of address those matters that have happened recently, we will also let you and remind you who the Bull City is. So I'll just briefly start with, yes, I'm aware that we've had some recent shootings. Yes, homicides happen. And yes, there was a recent story that stated Durham crime creeping into Wake County. And yes, I do believe that that was a very cherry-picked angle. It was also stated that I felt it was unfair. Let me be very clear, life is unfair. So if life is unfair, I hope you don't think that I'm thinking that you're going to be fair. So I really don't care what's fair and what's not fair. What I care most about is all we doing what we need to do to make sure that we're listening and leading for the people in this community, in Durham City, Durham County, and our Durham schools. So hopefully today, we'll be able to, through your questions, be able to make sure that we're responding with integrity, whether you're asking in that form or not. So with that being said, I'll keep it general and make sure that I give some space to our school board chair and our county commissioner. But yes, we are aware that there is crime happening in our city, just like any other city, especially communities of our size. I also, yes, understand that I cannot control the acts of an individual, but what I can control is how we react to it. And there are many things we're doing in this community, from the Bull City Future Fund, to making sure that we are investing in our reentry matters, and making sure we are helping people find jobs, making sure that we are providing more housing options for people to have a place to live. That's how the government responds, that's how our leaders respond, and we have to do it with our community members. And so I'll share a few more remarks in just a bit, but I'll pass it over to our county commissioner and board chair, Nita Alom.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. As Mayor Williams mentioned, we've all seen the recent headlines suggesting that, you know, Durham is somehow spilling over crime into Wake County. But honestly, this kind of story doesn't reflect the full picture of what the everyday reality is for Durham County residents and how much Durham County contributes to our region. And it's not just about these incidents, it's about the work in heart that Durham pours into the Triangle, the Triangle community day in and day out. You know, I was raised in Western Wake County and the Briar Creek area, and I loved growing up next to Durham. And this county with the vibrancy, the warmth, the diversity was part of, has been part of my life from the very beginning. And when it came time for me to decide, me and my husband, of where we want to settle down, there was no other choice but Durham. Having grown up on the border of wanting to move in because we wanted to be able to start a family and raise a family in a place as vibrant, as loving, and welcoming as Durham County. And that's why it's my chosen home of a place that I want to build a community that's built on love and diversity. And Durham offered all of that and more. And Durham's impact doesn't just stop, our positive impact doesn't stop at our borders. You know, I want to see, and I believe all of us want to see and hear, that the stories of Durham, the positive stories that are coming out, the amount of jobs that are being created in Durham that are providing opportunity to people across the Triangle, not just here in Durham, including many from Wake County, our businesses and industries that are growing, hiring talented people from all over. Why aren't we seeing stories that celebrate these new chances and opportunities for hard working people across our region? And I think about healthcare. Durham is home to some of the best hospitals and research institutions in the country, places that serve not just our residents, but families and patients from all across North Carolina. Many people from Wake County come here for care, for specialized treatments, and for compassion and expertise that Durham's healthcare providers are known for. And this is something we're proud of, and it's something that benefits us all. Education is such a huge part of Durham's story. Our schools, our training, our training programs are preparing incredible teachers, educators, many of whom go on to work in schools in Wake County and beyond. And they're shaping young minds, raising up future leaders, and making an impact that will ripple through generations. When we invest in education here, we're investing in the future of the whole Triangle region. And because of the benefits of strong schools and dedicated teachers, that doesn't end at the county lines of Durham. Public transit is another area where Durham is stepping up. We're building a transit infrastructure that's not just for us here within Durham County, but for everyone in the Triangle. Our transit systems are designed to connect our communities, to make communities easier, and to give people from all over better access to jobs, schools, and healthcare. And the Durham County Commission is deeply committed to this work. We've been increasing our investments in economic development, public health, social services, and lifelong education, not just for the people of Durham, but for everyone who lives, works, plays, and shares their lives in the region. So every one of these investments reflects our belief in a stronger, more connected community that lifts up all of us together. And I believe that is what develops and builds the full picture of what it is to be a Durhamite, what it is to be a contributing member of this Triangle region. And right now, more than ever, we need to come together. These times can feel very divisive, but here in the Triangle, we have a chance to be an example of what it looks like to support one another. Instead of fueling division or focusing on blame, let's keep our eyes on what we can do together to address our challenges that we have. Of we are stronger when we focus on things that connect us, not on the things that divide us. And Durham is woven into the fabric of this Triangle community. And we invite the press to tell the full, real story of what Durham is, not just the challenges that we're working on, but about the many ways Durham shows up for our region's success. Let's highlight what unites us and the real accomplishments we can all share in, and the incredible things that we can do when we work together and benefit all of our residents across the region. Thank you. I'll pass it to School Board Chair Millicent Rogers.
I'm Millicent Rogers, Chair of the Durham Public Schools Board of Education. And I stand before you today, not just as a chair of the Board of Education, but as a lifelong member of this vibrant, diverse, and resilient community. I join Commissioner Alom, Mayor Williams, today in response to the recent acts of hatred and bigotry that have shaken our community, the recent stories that tell just one side of the story. These acts have no place in Durham. They are a direct assault on the values that we hold dear, values of inclusion, unity, and respect for one another. To be clear, hate has no home in our city, our county, or in our schools. We will not allow these stories or these acts to divide us or to instill fear in our hearts. Instead, we stand here today, shoulder to shoulder, alongside our city and county partners, as a testament to the strength of our community. Our resolve is stronger than ever, and our commitment to equity, justice, and inclusion remains unwavering. Durham Public Schools has a mission that guides everything we do, to embrace, educate, and empower every student to innovate, serve, and lead. Our vision to ignite limitless potential in each and every one of our students is more than just words, it's a promise. It's a promise to our children, to their families, and our community that we will provide a safe, inclusive, and nurturing environment for every single student, regardless of their background, their race, or their beliefs. While you're reporting these stories, we invite you to report stories of the diverse tapestry that makes up Durham Public Schools. Our students represent the future, and that future is bright. Some of those stories include the graduating class of 2024 amassed $77.1 million in scholarships, with the historic Hillside High School leading with $26.5 million in scholarships. DPS has opened three new schools in the past years because of the growth and thriving in this community. We will open the Durham Early College of Health Sciences in August of 2025 in partnership with Duke Health and Durham Tech to provide those health services that Commissioner Alom spoke about. This year, we saw an increase in district enrollment, demonstrating this district's appeal to parents who value the experience we're offering our students. We've increased access to academic opportunities through Growing Together, the comprehensive initiative on redistricting in Durham, the first one in 30 years. 80.8% of DPS schools have met or exceeded growth for the 23, 24 school years, and DPS is a recipient of $11.4 million in U.S. Department of Ed grant to support the implementation of our Growing Together initiative. We've invested heavily in social, emotional, learning, and the well-being of our students, and will continue to support that and their academic success. This year, every student in DPS, regardless of socioeconomic status, eats breakfast and lunch for free, ensuring that all students are fueled for success. We will continue to prioritize equity in everything we do. These are the accomplishments that you should be reporting about Durham Public Schools and the growth of Durham. As we move forward, we will continue to work hand in hand with our city and county partners to protect our community, to ensure the safety and well-being of our students, and uphold the values that make Durham such an extraordinary place to learn and grow.
Thank you. So basically, you know, this is, this is not to ignore the challenges that we have in our community, but it's to say that our challenges are not the only thing that exists in our community. And, you know, you got to hear us talk about that full picture. But this is also an opportunity for us to say that, you know, when you talk about the Bull City, put some respect on it, because there are so many things in the city that are worth being excited about. There are 30,000 cities and towns in this entire nation. Durham is the number six best-run city in this nation. And just this morning, yes, there was a story that just came out about a young man that was just shot and killed. You know, yes, it was. And those are challenges that we're dealing with, you know? But also, Rent Cafe just said Durham, North Carolina, the number one livable city in the state of North Carolina, number 41 out of the nation. There is always perspective. So this is about, you know, this is about integrity to what is actually happening. And I know it's a lot of clickbait that we like to get when they talk about weather, traffic, house fires, and homicides. I get it. So of all people, you won't find me trying to dictate a news story. I believe that that integrity needs to be left where it is. But when you, when you take such a, when you take such an intentional dig, especially using percentages, 150%, that could be two, or it could be 20, you know? So I just want to make sure that we are telling the full picture here, and we're not running from our issues, just like I don't think any other city is running from their issues. You know, we're not running from the fact that, yes, we have historically had communities that have, that have, you know, had to deal with crime and homicides. We're not ignoring that. We accept that. But one thing you got to know is we're also working toward that. We're going to give you options, and I'm talking to my community members now. If we don't get engaged with one another, if we don't work together as a community, we're always going to be the subject matter that everyone else talk about. So to my people here in the Bull City, to our community, let's make sure that we are taking care of one another here at the local level. We must tell our story. It's ours to tell, and it won't be misrepresented. And I don't lose my cool, I don't get upset, but when you mess with my community this way, then you will hear from me in this way. So we'll open up for questions. And I do know Commissioner Alom has to leave shortly, so, but we are here together, bringing our community together. And our, our Director of Communications, Ms. Beverly Thompson, will facilitate.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to ask that you say who you are and wait for the mic to ask your questions, so that the people who are viewing online can hear. Okay? Thank you.
Hey, we have a news story. The news story is that Mike did not work. I'm asking, go ahead.
Hi, this is Cindy with ABC 11. Thank you, guys, for your time today. I know we, you know, you continue to talk about the work that you guys are doing. My question is specifically catered to the resources available to young people, especially with trying to reduce gun violence among young people. We recently heard about how Bull City United is one program that's been discontinued. Could you just talk more about some of the other work that the city is really trying to do to just reduce gun violence among young people, and how you guys are specifically trying to reach out to that group?
Yeah, sure. So there are lots of things that are happening, and I think what we have to realize is, the government serves as a catalyst, the government serves as a catalyst to resources, which is what inspired, you know, my office and, you know, support of the council to kick off the Bull City Future Fund. I used to get those phone calls of, hey, what, what is, you know, what can I do? So whether you have a dollar or whether you have a million dollars, you can donate to this fund. And what this fund does is, it invests into existing organizations that are doing youth impact work. If you have just looked into the Durham community, you'll just, just to name a few, you have Project 300, you have the Poop Center, you know, teaching young people how to become entrepreneurs. That's Sustainable Life, you know? You have the Thomas Mental Leadership Academy, and many, many, many more, the Emily K. Center. And what we want to do is invest in those organizations to help them expand their footprint. And then we have our Office on Youth that are doing amazing, that's doing amazing work, where they are, the young leaders are actually involved with their city and local government to actually work on, you know, their strategic plan to engage more youth. We have our Youth Ambassadors, led by youth, so changed by youth. There are endless amounts of things that are in our, in our community already that we are working on, but that's why I launched the BullCityFutureFund.com for people to just truly engage. But it's simple, it's more, it's actually simpler than that. If your kid is in a, in a school, especially in our public schools, they have access to their marching band, they have access to their dance program, they have access to chorus, they have access to our sports. Like, we have to also, we have to, like, we're standing up here as leaders, taking ownership of our challenges, we're taking ownership of also the opportunities that are out there. And as parents in our community, you have to make sure your child is getting involved, because every person that's committing a criminal act out there today, they were once a child. And at some point, something around your society led them down the wrong path. And what we're trying to do is provide options to keep them on the right path. I just spoke at Hillside High School yesterday, I said, I need you guys engaged, because if you're not, you're going to be talked about, rather than spoken with. And so that, that's, that's just, that's, I can't even sit up here and name all the options and opportunities, because there's so many, you know? But at the same time, we have to be collaboratively and collectively as a community, committed, you know, and invested in that.
I just want to add on one additional program. Mayor Williams mentioned so many ways that we're supporting our youth, but especially one way that Durham County has been investing in, the Project Build Gang Intervention Program. I think this is a program that has been so significant in supporting so many Durham County youth, of investing in young adults between the ages of 14 and 21 through coordinated case management and services to youth, and trying to get involved with youth who are high-risk of gang involvement, and intervening early on and providing them opportunities to grow and develop and see their potential outside of gangs, see their potential within their schools, see their potential within athletics and other programming that Mayor Williams has mentioned. And I think that's a program that we should really highlight and uplift, because it's a model for not just Durham, but for cities across the coun, across the country.
Okay, we're ready for the next question?
Sorry, I actually had one more.
One more?
This is the last one. Quick question is, has there been a conversation already with the DPD chief about the recent shootings? Could you also tell us more about your partner, the city's partnership with the police department to also just, again, you know, try to, like, what you guys are doing to reduce gun violence?
Yeah, I, the chief is texting me right now, she's watching, you know, and she was going to be here. We talk a lot. We spoke last night for about 30 minutes just about this very thing. You know, we're fortunate to have a chief who's so compassionate, you know, she's compassionate, she feels this. She has a black son. It hurts her personally when we see young Leos, young men that look like me hurting one another in the streets. Those are the challenges that I was referencing, and that's one of the main reasons why I ran for mayor, you know? And, and those are some of the, same issues, while every single council member sits up here, and every commissioner is on their diets, every school board member is on theirs, you know? Because we, we have to deal with those challenges, and we want to do something about it, we're committed. But, you know, to your question specifically, I talk to the chief all the time, you know? And we all know that policing inherently is a reactionary model, so we're trying to do as much as we can proactively. But this conversation cannot happen void of the community itself. And that's what, that's what we put a lot of energy into, you know? And when you guys go out in the public and say, you know, how do you feel about this shooting? If someone says, I'm scared, and that's the only thing that's, that's, you know, that's, that's captured, of course, they're going to be scared. You know, of course, they're going to be scared, and that's, and we don't want our residents to be afraid. That's why we invite them to be a part of this, and that's why in Durham, we embrace our challenges, we deal with our challenges, we do that with our law enforcement, you know? And I also talk to the sheriff. Our law enforcement is heavily engaged, heavily engaged, but we also have to make sure that we continue to build out policies that are helping us be as proactive as possible.
Okay, and our next question, this Monica, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Alex Pass with the Triangle Tribune. This is a question for Mayor Williams, or anyone can take this question. As we've just come off in election season, as we prepare for new elected officials at all levels to take office in January, in most cases, we talk about the partnerships that exist at the city, county, and school system level. What is your message for state legislators coming into a new session when we know what is happening in terms of budget cuts, in terms of state funding, in terms of how local education agencies are being undercut as resources are being directed elsewhere? What is your message to the state legislature in terms of what needs to happen from a strategic resourcing perspective to enhance these initiatives you want to undertake and the partnership that exists between city, county, and school system here?
Thank you for that question. The election. I am grateful for the voter engagement that happened in our community. I think it's a true testament of how we are paying attention. And I, I do believe that this is a time where we're going to have to be more innovative than ever before. And that's why I'm so grateful for the relationships that I have, you know, the chair of the county commissioners, Commissioner Alom, Chair Alom, Chair Rogers. The good thing is, we all know each other. We're neighbors, we're friends, and we talk literally every single day. And I'll be releasing a statement, I believe, later today about the election, that in my personal capacity. But I think that there are also, I've turned off the media for the last week, just to give me some peace. But I think that there are some, there is, there's a time for us to be innovative here, and there's some silver linings that we could really capitalize on. I think that, you know, North Carolina is positioning itself to go back toward a more balanced state-level government, you know? The Council of State is, I believe, five and five, with Democratic governor, lieutenant governor, Attorney General, Secretary of State, and school superintendent, and the rest are Republican. The Democrats broke the supermajority, so therefore, there's some leeway there to have things deliberated more without just a blanket veto override. You know, but I, be it, be it as it may, I just have so much hope in us at the local level. All politics are local, and our government should represent from the bottom up. And that means from here in Durham, all the way to the state level, all the way to the national level. So the good thing is, we get to work together, and we are actually discussing now how we are positioning ourselves. We do hear the rhetoric, political rhetoric, at the national level around deportations. We do know that Durham went overwhelmingly Democratic in this last election, but a Republican president won, and we do, we do feel as though there may be some retribution there. But we're going to try and prepare as best we can, and a lot of that has to do with us communicating with one another, so we can communicate to the public. And part of that means, you know, journalism with integrity. So we're going to be relying on you guys to also deliver that message as well.
The only thing that I would add to what Mayor Williams has shared is that student success is not partisan. Student success is going to go beyond this election cycle, and we have to continue to work with everyone in the state legislature and beyond to make sure that our students' needs are met. And there are rural counties in North Carolina that also need more funding, more support, and we all have to stand together to make sure that student successes are put first. We have to cross the aisle and have conversations and have tough negotiation about what's most important, to ensure all students are successful. On the local level, we will continue to work with the mayor, continue to work with the county commission, to make sure that our families and our communities are moving towards a safer space and a safer environment. But we have to continue to do the advocacy, because our students deserve that.
And full disclosure, I'm born and raised in Halifax County. That's the Leandro County, you know? And school doesn't necessarily have to stop at the end of the school day, and it doesn't have to be just in the school building, you know? And that's where the city and the county and, and the school system can work together. You know, so there are lots of innovative ways we can look at policy and provide those as options of implementation for our staff.
So we have time for one more question, and I see WRL.
Thank you. Sean Gallagher, WRL, question for the mayor. I know you have questions about the percentages that we used in our articles. You know, the number of Durham residents arrested in Cary went from 98 in 2019 to 244 in 2024. In Morrisville, that number went from 86 to 142. I know a lot of people up here talked about the systemic issues that fuel crime and the positives being done here to try to make an impact on that. When can residents expect to see results from that work so that there are direct impacts on the lowering rates of crime and that the perception of Durham also changes, that it's not compared negatively to the city of Raleigh?
Yes, I'll, I'll start answering that with a question. Have we looked at the amount of data, have we looked at data that represents the amount of crime in Durham from other zip codes or other cities? That's, that's kind of like my response, you know? And that's why I say it's a cherry-picked angle. I can, you know, I tell folks all the time, you know, the Bible and the Constitution are very similar, it's up for interpretation, you know? So I could choose to look at data in whatever angle way I want to look at it. We are all living freely in these community, in this community, and we get out of it what we put into it. I think it's really, it's misleading and it's a little false hope to say to the residents that when the mayor speaks, there's, you know, what they're in control of is going to totally change, you know? No, I will work with my residents to ensure. So when they can expect it, it's when we continue to work together, and that's what we're working on, you know? And we, these programs that we're bringing forth, it's, it's, we're always working progressively toward better outcomes. But... But it is, it is providing false hope that the government is controlling or contributing to the actual criminal acts happening by individuals. You know, like, no, we are responsible for incorporating policy to reduce this, but to make it as though, like, whatever I'm going to say up here, oh, the mayor's going to speak today, and all of a sudden, you know, crime is going to stop because he knows exactly what to say, this is misleading, you know? But the reality is, to your question, the residents of this community can engage in the many opportunities in which they can engage with us, and that's what we're doing. And we're going to continue to work toward these challenges. That is not a timeline. It's not, it's not a timeline, you know? But I'd love to know your percentage data of how much crime is in Durham from Greensboro residents, or how much crime in Durham from Raleigh residents, you know? And hopefully, you know, just, I'm not being cynical here, but I hope no one starts shooting up and down our freeway here, you know? But that was a story, and it's not to be made fun of, just like someone got killed. There was a shootout in a mall full of people, it's not to be made fun of. The question really is, why is this happening? Why is it that our most impoverished neighborhoods are what they are? Why are they majority black and brown? You know, and as we're doing this journalism thing, think about the effect. I, again, I don't care whether it's fair or not. Life isn't fair, so why should I expect you to be fair? But we can have working relationships, and that's why I answer the phone every time anyone from the media calls me. I answer the phone to make sure that I pick up and provide response, provide interaction and communications to our community. But it must be done in good faith.
So one quick follow-up. What responsibility do you bear then towards the decrease of crime or the, or crime in general here? What responsibility do you bear as the mayor of this city?
I'm the mayor of the city. My responsibility is in incorporating policy that will reduce bad things and enhance positive things, you know? Like, that, that, but, you know, the framing of the question almost limits the outcome, you know? And I'm not, I'm not knocking you, you and I spoke just the other day, yesterday, you know, and I, and I told you, you know, you choose the angle, and the angle will choose the story, but I choose my response, and I just won't be trapped in that cage. We're going to continue to do what we need to do in Durham to make this continue the amazing place that it is to live, you know? But if you want to really know the outcome of, when you have a headline that you guys had out there, look at my Twitter feed, and look who it awakens. That is part of the issue. We, you know, people are going to say what they want to say, that's fine, you know? But, you know, we're going to tell a story, let's tell the story and the whole story, you know? But like, you know, the state did surgical precision on gerrymandering. This was a very surgically precise framing of Durham crime in surrounding areas. So I, this is not a swipe on Raleigh, I wouldn't do that. This is not a swipe on my community, I wouldn't do that. The fact of the matter is, we're going to continue to work in the most progressive ways to ensure this is a safe community while also acknowledging that we will experience challenges on the way, while also acknowledging that we can't control human behavior, and whether human behavior has an address attached to their name doesn't matter, but what matters is how do we impact that human behavior from early childhood all the way up to current day? And we also have to, you as well, have to acknowledge the limitations of a government. So this is not for anyone out there to saying that, you know, we're running away from our problems. No, we're saying that our problems are no different than anyone else's, and we're also saying that we own that, and we challenge, we take, we challenge the fact that this is tough, and we're going to fight it always. We're never going to give up. But there's no, there's no timeline, like, I'm not going to sit up here and say, all right, by next month, I'm going to end all violence. No, that's just not realistic, and I'm living in reality here. I'll take one last question. Yeah, CBS 17.
Hey, Ben Booken, CBS 17. Really, you know, we have way too many grieving families in Durham over this past weekend, you know, from gun violence that we've seen. You mentioned that the police chief was watching this, you know, as we speak from home. Really a two-part question. You know, the police chief, Patrice Andrews, you know, doesn't seem like there's anyone more well-versed to talk about crime in our community. Do you know why she's not here with us today to speak about the recent crimes? And then also, do you have confidence in our police department's ability to fight these crimes, obviously with, you know, the limited resources that we have right now?
Absolutely. Limited resources is a reality, but also I think we have one of the best police forces in this entire state, if not this entire country. As a matter of fact, it's a reason why folks want to come here and train, you know? But the police chief is not here today because I asked her not to, she said, I want to come over and support, that's why I'm not inviting you to speak. This is for the elected leaders to make sure that we're acknowledging what's happening, and there is a way forward. We're going to highlight the things that we're working on, we're going to accept and embrace our challenges, but this is not, this, I did not want any staff up here speaking today, you know? So I asked her, you know, I said, I know you want to come, but you don't have to, because I'm not going to let you speak. This is going to be just for the elected officials, but she is eagerly working on trying to do her part. But at the same time, I hope that we're not looking at a police department and expecting them to stop crime. That's, that is on the policy side, and that is the things that we are doing and enhancing those things. But I also, you know, the tough truth is, we got to make sure that we say to our community members, we all have to be engaged, we all have to be engaged. And the fact of the matter is, we can't have this conversation with, you know, without the reality that there are some households that have some teenagers that are growing up that are becoming a lot to deal with, and I'm culturally very, very connected to that, you know? And so that is a reality, and we have to think about, you know, like, we, we like to report what happened, but what I'm trying to work on is trying to prevent that from happening. And, you know, there's some, like I said, I taught school, I, I lost count at the amount of teenagers that were going to go to jail for the rest of their lives, or, you know, that hurt someone or had been killed themselves, you know? And those are realities that are happening in every single community in this entire nation, you know? And again, you know, we're talking about gun violence here and homicides, we could talk about domestic violence, and you might see percentages higher in another community than ours, you know? So again, you know, we, we have, yes, we have limited resources, but we have one of the best police, police forces you can ever find. And I've experienced personally, police officers, police chiefs that glorify, you know, militarizing their police department in a city much smaller than ours, you know? Like, they want to see if they can get some tanks. We have a police chief that is personally affected by this, and I'll take that any day, any day.
Okay, this is Mary Helen from the News and Observer. I have one question for Chair Rogers and one question for Mayor Williams. The, the question for the school district is, are y'all collaborating with the city on busing, or are those conversations you would entertain in the future? And then for Mayor Williams, you kind of touched on it when you were talking about, like, who this brings out on Twitter, but can you just address directly what role you think race plays in this perception of Durham? And those are my questions. Thank you.
We are working on the best options available in terms of transportation for DPS students. We know that that is a part of enhancing the safety and security of our communities. And just like we're collaborating here in response to recent events in Durham, we are continuing to have those conversations.
And I think in the very near future, I will be driving a school bus, because I still have my active bus license. I'll be driving a bus to do like a promo ad and try and recruit some bus drivers. So we're going to collaborate in all the fun, innovative ways as possible. And to the online social media, as soon as this story came out, the quote Durham crime creeping into Wake County neighborhoods, end quote, it was interesting because that news hour at 6 o'clock was like 80% crime in Wake County, and then it talked about the investigative special of Durham crime creeping into Wake County, and the other was not from Durham residents. Oh, that was interesting as well. But X or Twitter is, it's a very dangerous place anyway, because it brings out the worst of people, I guess, or the worst of your community. And there are just folks that are just cheering and celebrating the WRL article, and they're calling Durham S-hole. We may be live, so I won't say it, but S-hole towns, you know, or dumpster, you know, or those people, you know? Folks like them are not welcome in Cary, and it gets worse. It's gruesome, and, you know, those are, that's why we need to be sensitive about the wording that we use, because you do bring out the worst in the community. You know, we're a very diverse community in the Triangle, you know, but it's up to us how we live it. The mayors and the leadership have worked together to bring nearly 1.3 billion dollars in the last year in the Triangle as a whole to invest in infrastructure. We also all deal with homicides, you know? And the stories that we choose to tell and how we tell those can bring out the best of us or the worst of us. And I want to leave those comments up there, because I want us to really own the damage that we can cause when we're insensitive this way and how we're communicating. Thank you all.